All right, I'd like to call to order South Fayette Township Planning Commission Meeting to order for October 23rd, 2025. And can we please start with a rule call?
Tom McNemma.
Here.
Doug Kane.
Here.
Joseph Johnson, not present. Jamie Nolan, not present. Danny Saron.
Present.
And also Jason Paulovich.
Here.
And Chris Seymour.
Here.
All right, can we please stand for a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our September 25 Planning Commission meeting. Anyone have questions or comments on the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve those, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion as second, questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Go to Old Business Review and Discuss S-05 2025, South Fayette Commons Preliminary and Final Minor Subdivision Application, Parcels 256-S9, Zone C2. Again, this is a subdivision for this property. Jason, you have anything on this?
Uh, yes. As you're aware, the, uh, the application has been tabled, uh, a handful of times here, and they have made substantial revisions based on our most recent review letter, which is dated August the 8th, 2025. We also have a review letter from Allegheny County Department of Economic Development, and I'm not sure, is the consultant here for the project, I don't know if you'd like to come up and maybe just introduce, uh, a little bit about what you're doing there, um, and I can go through some of the, the comments that we have and, and touch on how you address them.
Okay. So you can, Jason, you could.
Great.
So you, yeah, your point, so we, like, I know we tabled this a couple of times because I wanted it to be really clean, and we worked out the easement areas, you can see, so hopefully the plans are buttoned up really well, because that was, that's why we tabled it, uh, before.
Yeah, and if you just have any general overall comments related to this, this agenda item, which is the subdivision, you can present that, otherwise we'll go into the review letters.
Okay.
Uh, no, that's the subdivision. Um, I have no questions, and, you know, we did respond to the, the review comments. So we had a review, uh, review comments to the subdivision, the land development, and there was traffic. Uh, so yeah, we can, we can move, move, move on, that's great.
Okay. Yeah, Tom, I'll highlight some of the items we had in there. A lot of these were recording-related items that, that were addressed. Our biggest concern, um, for both plans was, and I'm just gonna point to it, was, was essentially, you know, this throughway area coming in off of Hickory Grade Road. We just wanted to ensure with the consultant that there was adequate room there to maintain the drive-through for the existing Duncan building, which would be, I got bearings here. Coming in on, on this side, you know, that's, you know, you have vehicles that stack for the drive-through to come around the building there. We just wanted to make sure that there was enough room to maintain two-way traffic through there. They did provide documentation, as there is, um, and I think it's deceptive in the site. You know, the, the striping is perhaps wider than it needs to be for that drive-through, um, and, and obviously the vehicles that stack for the, for the current Duncan building, um, you know, they, they occupy that entire area, and at, at times it makes it difficult for two-way traffic to come through there. So that was the, uh, the bulk of that item.
So you referenced, um, consultant. Can you specify or clarify who you're referring to?
Uh, KDH.
Okay.
And they're the consultant for both the subdivision and for the land development.
And are they specific traffic, or are they overall?
They are, site development.
Site development, thank you.
Yeah, they're the only consultant, to my knowledge, on this project, okay? Yes. Um, let's see if there's anything else noteworthy on this item. So as you recall too, when this area was originally developed, uh, you know, it was obviously only one parcel on this side. So, uh, when they came in for this, uh, the Duncan land development, uh, initially they did not have a subdivision plan, uh, so that was, that was part of the initial review, and, and since then, they, they've cleaned those items up. Uh, there was a zoning item that was previously called out for, for rear setback. They went through the zoning hearing board, uh, attained the necessary variance for that, so that, that item has been cleaned up. Uh, beyond that, it was just verifications on utilities and, and widths of easements and things of that nature, but they have addressed all of our items based on their resubmitted plans. Uh, they resubmitted twice actually in October, um, for these, and, and, you know, we don't have any outstanding items that were called out in our letter, and, uh, they've also addressed the items in, uh, the Allegheny County Letter, which, which goes way back to August from, from their previous submittal, but, but those items.
All right. And then.
Have been satisfied.
Thank you. And since we're focusing mainly on subdivision on this item, can you please point to or clarify exactly where the subdivision line is? I believe I see the bold, uh, property line that is showing how the subdivision is happening? Is this all one lot currently?
Basically, the dividing line for this parcel would be here. So then the remainder is going to be through this, as it comes up through. This is part of an easement, but that's actually part of the property for this. So this is the created parcel that is not subject to land development tonight. It's only for the Duncan on this side.
Okay, so Lot C1 and Lot C2 used to be one lot, and now we have two.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that will leave a remainder parcel of 0.848 according to their plan for future development. And the Lot C1 area, which is 0.624, is for the land development, land development item on tonight's agenda. And David, I don't know if you have anything beyond that to add to this?
No, the only thing, it's a lot easier to see the, the plan once you look at the land development, because that's the consolidation. But you'll, you'll see how the Duncan looks in the land development plan, but yeah, that's right. So the, the, the thing we, uh, thing that was ironed out was the reciprocal, or the easement, um, as you can see, yeah, it's like full two lanes, and, um, it extends all the way across the Duncan property, um, as well, so, you know, Old Pond is, is still available, uh, as a.
Now, this is more of a question for the land development, but. This easement that'll provide access through to Old Pond, is that going to be installed with the development of Duncan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It was, obviously the timing of it wasn't noted on, on the plans, but I just wanted to verify that that was going to be, and that, that will be an item for the developer's agreement to ensure that that is put in place at that point in time.
Park parking is right off of that drive-through. See, that would have to be.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we're kind of talking about both together here.
Somewhat, yeah.
Does it make sense to take a look at the land development plan versus just the subdivision plan, just?
Yeah, it's a lot easier.
Tom, would that be all right?
So.
Do you want to pull up the site plan for that, Abby, if you can?
So we'll hold our motion on.
Yeah.
Uh, Old Business A, and we'll pick up on Old Business B, go through that, and then we'll act on both?
Yeah, I think we do that often, so I think.
Very good.
Agreed.
So, let's, uh, if there's nothing else to discuss on A for now, I will read in Old Business B, Review and Discuss SP-03 2025, South Fayette Commons Preliminary and Final Land Development Application, Parcels 256-S9, Land Development for Relocation of Duncan in South Fayette Commons.
Okay. Um, we have a review letter dated August the 8th, uh, for the land development plan. They have, uh, as I noted earlier, uh, submitted twice in October in response to our comments, and, um, really have addressed all the, the outstanding items that were in there. Again, I did want to touch on, as I was trying to illustrate this earlier, so the, obviously this is existing Duncan, our, our concern in this letter was that, you know, they're stacking through here to get into, uh, the drive-through in that area, and we just wanted to ensure that there was enough room for those cars, as well as, as you have it shown, two-way traffic through there. Uh, it is tight, uh, I mean, obviously you've demonstrated that, you know, uh, you can achieve that. It is a private road, um, you know, as is the other throughway through here, um, but, you know, that, that was probably the biggest item that we had in there, and, you know, they feel as though that, uh, that can be accomplished. Uh, I do have a question, so, what, the future usage of that Duncan building, is, is that going to have a drive-through?
You mean the, the Duncan that's there?
Correct.
Uh, no, the, the bank is, uh, the, yeah, the bank owns that property, so they're gonna expand their bank.
Okay.
So it's just gonna, it's just gonna be the bank. I, I'm almost 99% sure, because they do own it, and they essentially are waiting, uh, as, the idea is as soon as we literally open, we're gonna close the doors there, uh, or, you know, somewhere around that. So then they'll, that'll, that really there'll be no, real no traffic going in there, that'll be, that'll be bank traffic.
Okay.
So that, and that's one of the, you know, the nice things about this plan, uh, while that, while that spot out front is good, this just flows the traffic much better by having it over there, and the customers will know. Yeah, you may take them, you know, a trip or two, but it will alleviate any, any problem on Hickory Grade, and we want to stack more cars, and this does that too. So it's a, it's a win for us and a win for the bank.
Yeah, I, we're making that assumption that the bank is expanding? Or do we have a definite on that? Because if, if the bank does not expand there, and they lease it out to another.
Drive-through.
Drive-through, and then we're stacking out onto the road, blocking that traffic, I, I think that's a big assumption at this point.
Well, that's the bank's problem then, if they try to get approval on that, but the bank does own it. I, I want to say 99%.
Okay.
I mean, I could get you an answer tomorrow, but.
Yeah, I understand, but this is, this is the overall development as well.
We can't control what the bank does. If the bank wants to turn that into anything, a jewelry store, they would have to come for approval for that.
I'm not sure that's true, when they have existing use, they have existing use for a drive-through there now, so I'd like to hear clarification on that.
Yeah, I could, it, I'm like I said, 99.9% sure, the bank owns it, and they're waiting for us to leave, and I, I can clarify that and get information, the bank is taking it over.
I think.
They, they don't want, they don't want another business there.
Understood, so I think the point that we're trying to ensure here is that we don't approve a plan that allows a business with a drive-through in the new Duncan location, and a business with a drive-through at the existing Duncan.
Correct.
Because the way it's in front of us now, that's what we would be approving.
Yeah, you know we're closing, but, right as we sit here, you don't know what they're opening. I can get, I can get something from the bank, uh, because, once again, we're coordinating with the bank in order to move, so not, not a problem, but I totally understand.
So do we have any information on how the traffic study was done, as far as what use they incorporated in the existing Duncan?
There was no traffic study as far as the land development. Uh, there was a traffic review by, uh, the Township Traffic Consultant Gateway, and they did respond to those comments.
So if we have some language in there that.
But I can tell you, it didn't address this item.
Okay, so there was no comment in that traffic analysis that would say that there, there, uh, it was based on a drive-through or not a drive-through in the existing location, just silent on it?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what I can do is, I will get something from the bank, um, that will set forth that they're, they're expanding.
Now, the, the Gateway Letter, um, addresses a few items, uh, one of which was truck turning templates, uh, that don't pertain to what, the item we were just talking about. They also, uh, were verifying, verifying, uh, access from Old Pond, uh, they addressed those items, and the last one was, um, another Old Pond-related item, uh, for access off of that, and they, they addressed that one as well. So no, there was no mention of this, um, you know, potential conflict, if you will, with the existing drive-through area.
So what's the best way to refer to the existing Duncan building or lot or location? Is it, is it, would it be, uh, Lot Number, or something else, you think?
I don't know if it's referenced by.
Lot A. Existing Duncan is what it says on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably the easiest thing to refer to it as the Washington National Bank parcel.
Okay.
You know, because that's, that's who owns it now.
Something like that, okay. Okay, um, what else do you have there?
Nothing hanging, Tom. Uh, everything else that we had noted has been addressed, everything that Gateway had noted had been addressed. Um, the county, uh, had issued comments on this, they addressed those items, um, but they, they really didn't pertain to the item that we were just discussing there. It was more clarifications on required parking, um, and, and there, there were some misinterpretations on this site as far as how this was gonna operate, um, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but this location is not to serve patrons. Uh, patrons can go in and place an order to go, but there's no interior seating, so, so basically the, the parking requirements are much less than what we would typically see for a fast food or, or anything commercial, uh, of this realm. They only have 14 proposed parking spaces, they are compliant with that. Uh, that was one of the county's comments that, uh, you know, based on square footage, it was gonna be 28th or something along those lines, uh, but that is not accurate.
So, usually a topic that comes up on these subdivisions and developments is sidewalks, is there, has there been any discussion about sidewalks?
They did add sidewalks along the frontage, yes, that was a comment.
Which frontage, Hickory Grade or Old?
Uh, Old, Old Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't technically have.
They don't have anything to do with this.
On Hickory Grade for that, you know, this one will be addressed when it comes in for final land development, the Bacon one, but their only, uh, involved frontage here would be Old Pond.
Okay, so even as part of the subdivision, that sidewalk would kick in discussion at the development portion?
Correct, it will, and they, they initially had no sidewalk shown, and to address our comment, they did show the sidewalk.
I'm just taking an extra moment to just look at the traffic flow. It seems pretty clear on here, but I'm just trying to make sure I have it straight.
And this, this has been cleaned up a lot from the original submissions, uh, to what you're seeing now. Yeah, we, there were a lot of questions, um, by us, by the county, by Gateway initially, but, uh, in, you know, in today's plan, it, it has definitely cleaned that item up.
So on the right side of the parcel, that's just gonna be a one-way coming in from Old Pond? Are you gonna have signs up to say, you know, do not enter for people that are trying to get?
Correct, on that side, yeah.
Okay.
When we originally submitted it, it, you know, the question was, was this two-way? And we were still working on that area, but no, it was always one-way, so.
Okay.
That's correct.
So if you come in the entrance that Dan was just referring to, is there curb between that and the drive-through lanes?
No, it's, 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 it's two-way traffic, and that's a one-way road, no.
He's talking about in this area.
That's a painted line.
Yeah, there is not curb there.
Not allows trucks to navigate and, you know, delivery trucks a couple of times a week, but.
I'm not sure I understand that comment.
Yeah, there's no curb there.
Okay.
And it would be, it would be.
Garbage truck comes in and picks up the garbage, you want to give them plenty of room to cut.
What's the, what's the flow of the garbage truck to get to the dumpsters? I'm not following what you're saying.
He would come in on Old Pond Road, pull right up to the dumpster, he'd be a front motor, and pull, and then continue out on Hickory Grade.
So they wouldn't go around to follow the traffic flow?
They would, they would follow the traffic road. They, they would come in from the bottom, pick up the dumpster, you can see the dumpster down there in bottom left.
Yeah.
And I think what you're suggesting, they would come in, pick up, and then exit that way.
And our delivery trucks, they're twice a week, they would, they would use that as well. But we, we don't want to obstruct with a curb right down the middle of a, of a two-lane road there, um, and restrict anything. It's, that's gonna get the least, I, I don't even know if it's gonna get any traffic, but we did want it to be one-way, just to, just to simplify it, at lea, at least from the Duncan perspective, it works out much better that way.
Can't see it.
That was the area that we got the variance for that was in a rear setback.
I see.
So, just to get some perspective, the rear of the property is actually on the drive-through windows side, the way the development was originally designed. So the front is, the, the front where the entrance is and where this, where the parking is, is actually facing Hickory Grade Road, and that's, that's the front parcel, so that's why it's, it's, um, it's kind of situated that, that's how it was originally developed.
Okay, any, any thoughts on the best way to incorporate some tor, some type of, um, documentation showing a non-drive-through at the existing Duncan as part of the motion? Is it something that we can just, what do you think?
I can provide, I can just go ahead and provide a letter, or something from them. No, that's not gonna be an issue.
I just want to see how we want to word the, um, the motion, if we, if, if the board so decides to include something like that in that motion, it's, can we just use the word documentation, or is it a letter?
Yeah, some kind of, you could use something, subject to.
Confirmation from the current owner?
Confirmation of non-use of the drive-through, you know, on the.
From the existing owner?
Existing Duncan parcel.
If it, just to clarify, the timing of the closure of the existing Duncan versus the occupancy of the new structure, I mean, are they gonna be open at the same time at all?
No.
Okay.
There'll probably be a slight delay, but ideally, the one closes on Friday, and the other one opens on Monday, but that's.
Okay.
My guess, it's gonna be a, a few weeks.
Okay.
The only thing, uh, the, the bank, the bank doesn't have a drive-through right now.
They do.
They have it on the other side.
It's on the other side, and really not in conflict with this area.
Yep.
Tom, I would suggest perhaps, um, language to the effect of elimination of the existing Duncan drive-through upon occupancy of the new building, perhaps?
Yeah, that's, that's well said.
So I'd say we only need to make that portion of the motion in the.
Correct, it really does not pertain to the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
So at some point, I thought there might have been discussion of trying to line this up with the road on the other side of Old Pond. Do you know if there was any discussion related to that, and if, anything materialized?
No, not throughout the application process, no.
We had it designed that way in previous concepts, um, this one, we lined it up with the Taco Bell to streamline there, and if they wanted to use the Old Pond entrance instead, that was just a matter of what worked best on the parcel without leaving a bunch of wasted space left on the Duncan.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure, is the, if you scroll down just a little bit more there, Abby, please, on the bottom side of Old Pond, are both of those in use today on the other side of Pond? Whoop, there you go, those, the two that are showing outside of this development, are those both open today and used?
No, they're both.
Part of that development, do you know? I don't, I can't.
The one that's the office building, I know, wherever the building is, right across the, the street, so yeah, there's, there is a curb right there, correct.
So, I'm not, I'm not aware that there's an office building there.
But I, I was actually in it the other day, I don't know what it is, it's, it's, uh, um, you guys would probably know better.
Is that the storage facility?
Yeah, the stor, that's right.
Is that the stor, I think that's the storage facility, isn't it?
Let me see, so we're talking about.
Right there.
Here and here, okay. This one and this one, okay, I got it, I'm sorry. That, that makes sense.
Sorry for the confusion.
All right, you guys have anything else? No?
Deal with A first?
Yes, please.
Uh, motion to recommend approval of S-05-2025, South Fayette Commons Preliminary and Final Minor Subdivision Application, Parcel 256-S9, Zone C2, uh, subject to the GTE Review Letter of August 8th, 2025, and the Allegheny County Review Letter of August 12th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Doug, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Old Business B.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve SP-03-2025, South Fayette Commons Preliminary and Final Land Development Application, um, in, in accordance with the GT Review Letter dated 8/8/25, um, also with the stipulation of the removal of the drive-through at occupancy of the new Duncan.
Existing Duncan.
In the, in the existing Duncan.
All right, good, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Doug, a second by Dan.
Sure.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries also, thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, we'll move to New Business. New Business A, Review and Discuss S-07 2025, Pot Subdivision, Preliminary and Final Minor Subdivision Application 291, Sagin Road, Zone R2. What we got here, Jase?
Uh, we have a simple subdivision plan. Um, first of all, is there a consultant for this one? If you'd like to come up, uh, and maybe just introduce the, the project, and I'll go through our letter.
Good, what they wanted to do.
What they wanted to do was, they just split that into two lots there. The Lot Number 1 there, and Lot Number 2, where the houses are there, they're going to keep that lot, and then there's a piece over on the other side, on the right-hand side, they wanted to keep out with the house.
That stays with Lot 2, yes. And I thank you for clarifying that. They did resubmit plans that, you know, addressed some of the items we had in our letter.
And could you just state your name for the record with...
Plumservane.
Thank you. Do you have comments you want to have addressed, Jason?
Yes. And as I mentioned, they did provide some clarification on items earlier today that we got. There's also a county review letter. And Abby, could you pull that up, please, if you don't mind? I just want to make sure we're... Yeah, they had questions. Originally in our letter, we had questioned that remainder piece on the other side of the road. They did provide clarification. The county commented on that as well. That's not a problem to have part of parcel 2 on the other side. We just wanted to make sure that wasn't intended to be its own parcel or anything like that.
Okay, so just for clarification, everything on the other side of Sagin Road is part of parcel 2?
Correct. With the remaining structures, yes. So then parcel 1 would be all vacant land?
Yes.
Okay. They had a couple clarification items. We had those as well. I mean, there wasn't a whole lot to this application. Obviously, the creation of this subdivision action doesn't warrant any land development or anything of that nature. You'd have to come in for any proposed improvements.
Yes.
The sanitary authority was, I think, the only entity that did respond to the application. They have no comments on this. They did note that Lot 1 would have to be served bilateral and whatnot, but that's Aside from that, I mean, the revised plan, I think, is largely going to suffice the comments that we had. I don't have any further items, Tom.
All right, can we get a motion on New Business A, please?
Motion to recommend approval of S-07-2025 Pot subdivision preliminary and final minor subdivision application 291 Sagin Road, Zone R2, in accordance with the GTE letter of October 9, 2025, and the Allegheny County letter dated September 30, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dan, second by Jamie. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Item 7, acceptance of applications. Looks like we have none?
None.
We've got one, just got one in today. Yeah, we, one literally came in today. We haven't had an opportunity to look at it, and if the planning commission would be okay with it, we were going to do the appropriate review on it to make sure that the required elements were in it and just accept this one internally so that we didn't have to have a meeting in November simply to accept this, because this, as it came in, would be queued up for December.
What is the application, just so we have an idea?
It is the McCracken Pot subdivision. It's a minor subdivision on Boxwood.
Okay.
Boxwood.
Is it a true subdivision or is a law line revision? I don't know that it's a real big casualty of it. Next to it is vacant lot, and they want to split that lot between...
Yes, 1110 through 114.
So an empty lot between them will be combined, so three lots will become two?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it would be a law line revision.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they dropped it off today, they said, basically, there's a parcel that sits between them, and both of the neighbors wanted to purchase it, so nobody else could build there. So the one neighbor just was going to take some and then give the rest to the other neighbor.
And they're okay with waiting until December on this? I mean, they missed the submittal deadline anyway, so then, I'm not sure we can...
So you're asking us to allow the staff to accept that so it can show up on the next meeting?
That's correct.
Good with that?
Yep.
Yep, good.
Easy.
Anything else under acceptance of apps? We have any open discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.